Call to order, the meeting of the common council for Monday, July 23rd. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your public standing, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next we'll have the role.
Alderperson Kemp.
Here.
Alderperson Cole.
Here.
Alderperson Ricky.
Here.
Alderperson Touche.
Present.
Alderperson Cronin.
Present.
Alderperson Gaskell.
Here.
Alderperson Journey.
Here.
Thank you. Next up, we will have public comment, and I did want to make one note, later in the agenda, there's a public hearing regarding the Lincoln Street development, so if you're here to testify on that, you can testify under the public hearing, although if you're worried you might need to leave before we get around to that, you can of course testify under public comment now if you'd like, so, so yeah, public comment is open, if anyone from the public would like to testify.
Hi, I'm Sylvia Novak, I live at 110 Lincoln Street, and we've already signed in. This is in relation to the proposal for the 90 multi-unit family that we're still trying to pursue. We're really still concerned about exactly the same things we've been talking about for the past six, seven, eight, nine months, if probably not more. We have taken, actually, we've taken the liberty of taking some pictures over the past, certainly over the past season, different times, different days, different events of Lincoln Street, Schweitzer, William Street, we do have that available if at some point the council would wish to see it. What we're stating are simply facts, it's not personal opinion, it is simply facts. My husband and I have lived here since 2000, this has continued to be a busy area for three out of four seasons of the year. Same thing, you've got the Verona area theater group, you've got the EMT people, the fire department, the police department, you've got people that are trumming up and down the street on a very regular basis, and they're people that don't live here, and again, we're not opposed to having something built here, but we really are not for having 90 apartments built mainly because of foot traffic and car traffic, and it doesn't fit this area, because this is already an established area. There are several other neighbors that would have liked to have been here, but were not able to be here due to work and home assignments. One of the questions that seems to have come up by people that have been speaking, neighbors with each other, not out of necessarily comparing notes, but has been, when the original answer came of a five to three vote against how it was, people wanted to know, how has it been, had to come back when that was supposed to have been closed? And we had very kindly an email from our mayor explaining that there was sort of like a loophole that if it was less than a year, that they could present two other options, and that was how it sort of came about. Now, we did not know that, and again, we're not for something being built there, but I do believe it needs to be something which fits in with this area, and whether that is parking, whether that is something like single-family housing, whether it's just a row of condos, or even, what do you call people who store, like storage units, something like that, I think would possibly be appropriate. They're just continued concerns, and again, we don't have any other ulterior motive other than the fact that this is already a very, very busy street, and we've lived here since 2000. We really would appreciate the council just considering it very, very carefully, because at the end of the day, whoever builds here is going to build and leave, but those of us that live here are going to have to live here and stay with what we're left with. And quite honestly, I don't want to have to move. We really like where we are, it's got, the neighbors here are wonderful, everybody gets along with each other, you know, we've got a mixture of single-family homes, we've got rentals that have been behind us for probably longer than we've been there, but again, they're not apartments, they are either duplexes, or they're townhouses type things, and that's not been an issue at all, so it's got nothing to do with, you know, being hoity-toity, well, you know, you don't want anybody else in here other than single-family, and that absolutely is not true, and I really want to state that for the record, because that was mentioned last time. I do thank you for listening and considering, and thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
Hello, my name is Randy Bruce, I'm with Kenothian Bruce Architects, and I'm a little unsure as to the procedure here, if you would like me to make comments relative to the project at this time, or wait until...
Totally your call.
Okay. I think then I'll go ahead and make the comments now, and then I'm gonna ask Brian Stotter to just have the boards there, and I think they'll be televised as well. We had, we have asked for this to be reconsidered this evening, because we believe that this is the best development option for this parcel. We have, at the prior council meeting, we had discussed two additional development alternatives, which I believe that were not well received, at least in terms of the relationship to this proposal. We are making a proposal for a 90-unit apartment development. This is not low-income housing, this is for, it's market-rate housing, it would serve current residents of the community, or people that would like to reside in Verona, that are employed, could become active, good members of the community. We have, prior to the council voting to deny the project, we had been in front of the plan commission several times, and had made multiple changes to the development plan based on both comments from the neighborhood and from the plan commission. The current development proposal is showing up on that board, it's a single unit, single building, L-shaped, three stories, 90 units. We had started with a development plan that was actually, two buildings, had 113 units, we had a two-story building uptight towards the single-family homes to the west, that was not well received by the residents, and their discussion to us was that they'd like to see some more open space, and so we reconfigured the plan and came up with an alternative where that building was then moved to the north side of the site. That development plan had 114 units, the planner, Adam Sayer, had recommended really that that was too much density on the site. We came back with the current development proposal that we have, which is one building, 90 units, three stories, and configuration. There are two concerns that I have heard succinctly from the neighbors, one having to do with traffic concerns, the second having to do with stormwater concerns, and so we have put together a graphic related to that traffic issue, just maybe to help describe this a little bit better. So, on the screen there, you'll see our site on Lincoln Street, the traffic is, that's created there now, that's existing now, is shown in those orange bars, both going north and going south. Those orange bars, you can see that the, we're suggesting that the, based on the traffic information that the city engineer has provided, there will be an increase of traffic, certainly both going north and south. Most of that increase is going to be going north, and some of it will be going south. You can see the increment, incremental change is the yellow, would be the 72 units that were approved as part of the neighborhood plan, the green is the increment that would be going from 72 to 90 units. So, we are talking about an increase in traffic, but not a significant increase in traffic. The traffic that I believe that the neighbors are mostly concerned about is the traffic going south. The traffic going south is increasing, but on the peak hour, the worst hour of the day, the amount of traffic increases is really, there is 10 cars per hour, or one car per every six minutes. So, we're not talking about a significant increase in traffic. We also looked at the Valley View, and have kind of presented what happened along Valley View Road. Valley View has an increase in traffic as well, but again, it is a relatively low number in terms of the traffic generation that this will run through the neighborhood. In terms of stormwater, since our last meeting, we have asked our engineer, and our engineer is here this evening, Ryan Quam, we've asked him to do some more detailed engineering and modeling of the stormwater effects. The presentation board that's up there shows, in the dark purple, those are the rate runoff in cubic feet per second of water flow that's leaving the site currently. After the site is developed, because of the stormwater management plan that we will be putting into place, those rates will be reduced significantly. You can see on the one- and three-year events, they are cut dramatically, so the typical rain events, the stormwater will be reduced dramatically. On the 10- and 100-year events, the larger events, we are reducing them as well, and we are exceeding the, both the local and county requirements for that stormwater management. That's just in terms of what's quantity of water that's leaving the site, but in terms of the quality of the water, right now, the water is leaving the site, is not getting treated or cleaned in any fashion, so it's hitting the pavement, the oils and sediments from the pavement are getting washed and carried into the stormwater system. We will be, in post-development, our stormwater management program will clean that water before it leaves the site and enters the storm, the generalized storm system in a cleaner way. So, we're not only reducing the amount of water that's leaving the site, or slowing it down, we are cleaning it as well. So, I wanted to bring those up to you. We have a, we think we have a very attractive project, one that is going to be an asset to the city of Verona. We ask that you confirm the plan commission's action and approve this general development plan. If the general development plan is approved, we will go back to the plan commission and work out all the details that are associated with that in a specific implementation plan. Those details will include the detailed engineering, landscaping, the architectural treatment, materials, colors. We're certainly happy to work with the neighbors on all of that in a very detailed fashion. Thank you very much.
All right, we are still in public comment, if anyone from the public wishes to speak? And of course, if you could introduce yourself and...
Hi, I'm Lori Everett, I live at 202 South Jefferson Street. Just a quick note, sometimes it's really hard to hear you guys when we're sitting back there, so you'd speak in your microphone would help us so much. First of all, I am also not opposed to something being built there, I think there will be, but it should also fit better into the neighborhood, like single condos or townhouses, single-family homes, something that fits within the neighborhood better. Speaking of traffic, I've been there about 12 years, and I almost never make a left turn out onto either of the major roads, I always go around right, and sometimes of the day, I don't even bother, because it's going to take too long to do that, so I plan my days accordingly, just to get out of my house already. And I know with Epic and things, things will get worse, but having a huge apartment building there that doesn't fit with the neighborhood isn't quite ideal. If they're giving us a choice of like different options of the 90 apartments or offices, or light industrial, I'd vote for the light industrial, I think it's kind of fine the way it is. It's nice to have different options within the city, and that's different, and I think there's kind of a glut of apartments and offices already in Dane County, so, thank you.
Thank you. Other people from the public who'd like to speak?
My name's Patty Lulison, and I live at 100 Schweitzer Drive, which is around the corner from the proposed project, and I just wanted to come and, as a neighbor, voice my opinion that I don't care if it's light industrial or residential, I think that, looking at the architect's pictures, that it looks like a very nice project, but I still think the density is too high for this neighborhood. This is a settled neighborhood, the density of the neighborhood itself is spread out, there are limited access, if you go down Lincoln Street, to the south on Lincoln Street, there are houses, the only way they go out is Lincoln Street, they can go out Valley View, but there's only a few places. And while it can be congested in the morning and evening, it's, there are other times when these streets, which are, were purposely built at the time to be more like boulevard streets, there are no sidewalks in the area, so everybody traverses in the street, and that is my greatest concern, is when you, if you count the number of houses in that neighborhood, in that southern part of that district, it, 90 would double the density that it currently is. You have people who built homes there in the 40s and 50s, and many of these residents or their families are still living there, so they've had these homes a long time. So, there's quite a bit of older residents in the neighborhood, and I guess I'm just trying to speak for them a little bit tonight, too, because they walk in the streets, they go over to the senior center, which is down Valley View, and you know, it's not far away from them, they live in that neighborhood because they can get to the post office, they can get to the grocery store, they can get to downtown by walking. Many of you knew our resident who passed away not long ago, who lived to be in his hundreds, Ernie Johnson, he used to travel around the block every day with his walker. This would be difficult, there's also, there's many people here who have parents, grandparents who are in four winds, and they take them out in the wheelchairs, et cetera. If you, I don't have a, where I live, my home used to be like the edge of the property there, there wasn't a Lincoln Street when I was little. There was a lumberyard behind my property, so as far as, you know, any light industry, that's never been an issue in Verona, especially in this neighborhood, because we were used to it. But, the city council, at the time, approved a very nice group of condos that fit well into that area. I believe their hometown condos is what, 15 units approximately? 12, 12 units, and it goes right along the bike path. And then I'm not sure about the other, the Depot Street condos, but again, it fit very well into the neighborhood. There are 11 duplexes right next to where the apartment building would be, so there are, you know, other types of multi-use family, and I have no problem with apartment buildings, but 90 units, that's a lot. Now, when it was presented, they were also talking about some of the extra cars, et cetera, may have to go on to street parking, et cetera, which would be very difficult along Lincoln Street. The families that have moved in there, and families from all over Verona, if you have soccer kids or anything like that, your kids go over and play soccer at Veterans Park. And I know the architect has used some visuals, I don't know, I have some pictures here on a Scandis that some of us neighbors have taken when there's cars parked along, just to show how many there are. I don't know how many people on council have ever been down Lincoln Street when it's busy, but it gets hectic, and they park right up to where the bike path is, and that bike path is well-used, which is great, and I think it's great to even have a community put in there on a smaller scale that would be bike-friendly, because I'm all for that. But, the sheer density, I feel, makes it a danger, not only to the people crossing the road there, but all of the people using Veterans Park. It's just too dense, and they're not going to just go out onto Verona Avenue, they're going to go all through the neighborhood, et cetera. They'll be going back to Valley View, the people along Valley View are suddenly going to have a lot more traffic, too, because everybody's going to decide that's the good back route out of town. So, I just feel that while it would make a nice use to put some apartments in there, I would say less apartments than 90, again, that doubles the density of that neighborhood, and I don't think it's fair to take, not take into consideration, the people that have lived there for many, many years are used to be in the flow of going into the street, riding their bikes in the street, walking in the street, this would cause probably everybody to have to put in sidewalks, and then that would just limit so much, so, that's how I feel about it. So, thank you.
Thank you. We're still in public comment, so if anyone would like to speak, now would it be the time?
My name's Joyce Freisinger, and I also live in the neighborhood. I am against this project also. At the last meeting, some comments were made that some of us neighbors may be biased against rental property, and I'd like to say that's not true from anyone that I've discussed this with. The real issue is the size of the project, the density. There's plenty of duplexes that are rental in our neighborhood, and that works just fine. I live in a condominium, so it's, we don't rent, but you know, it's very similar, it's a multi-unit complex. I think the proposed apartment building is way too big, I think it would be cramming something into a neighborhood, and I really think it's going to cause major traffic problems. I've also got pictures of, I think it was June 1st, when something was going on at the park, and there's cars parked all the way up and down both sides of the street. This size of apartment complex is most likely going to have more cars than the available parking lot, or underground parking, and there's just no more room on the street. The intersection dead ends at Culvers, and then south is neighborhoods and small streets with children and older people, and I really hope that the scale of this could be sized down, or maybe a whole different idea of, you know, some sort of community center, or something for kids, or a smaller apartment building. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Other comments from the public?
I'm Richard Novak, I live at 110 Lincoln Street, right across the street. This mic's really loud, I'm good. The one thing that we really need to do is, you need to make sure that when you do something, especially here, that it's done right, because if you, you can't rip out the building once it's there, because it's going to be, it's going to double the amount of traffic that we have. And I mean, that's the sheer size of all the houses that we have in this neighborhood, and the cars, basically, versus this 90-unit apartment complex is going to really double the thing, and you're probably going to have, you know, at least three-quarters of all the people in the neighborhood are going to have, you know, vehicles of some type. So, this is really way too big of a project, I personally believe. I think, do you actually live here, in this neighborhood? We do. And, I mean, it's, people that live here are going to be the ones that are going to be affected. People that build the building, and then they're gone, you know, help with maintenance and stuff, but once we have, you know, double the traffic issue that we do now, and there's times that you just cannot get out, because there's things going on, and the soccer games, they're always, probably every other weekend almost, there's sporting events, mud runs, just to host, there's marriages, well, graduation ceremonies right over here, but there's, there are a lot of things going on in our, in City Hall here, the grounds, so, I mean, it's not just me, it's all the neighbors that have come here, because we know what this is going to do to our neighborhood. If suddenly you went home to your place where you live, and suddenly you have twice the traffic of what you currently are, that would affect you. And I, as far as I know, they don't plan on building sidewalks, but still, the cars are going to be on the road even if sidewalks, additional sidewalks are built. So, it's really important to get some other type of thing, not so big. A center would be really good. I personally would like to see a parking lot, because the events that we have here would help with a lot of, in the City Hall area, would help with a lot of the stuff. When we have hometown Verona days, this place is mobbed, and I mean, everybody knows that, because just about everybody should come here, and it's like that for four or five days. So, I really would encourage the board here to turn this down and get it something more useful, that it won't be such an inconvenience, or slow everybody down from going to work and doing different things, going shopping and stuff. That's probably the biggest thing, but if you vote yes, there's no going to be turning back, and then the police that we have here, they're gonna, it's going to take more time to respond to things, or you'll have to build a different police station, which would cost a lot of money. The fire trucks, or the fire station's just around the corner, and I mean, they come up and down Lincoln Street occasionally, probably at least once a week, for various things. Summertime... Summertime, there used to be hot rodders, but they can't, the, that would go up and down Lincoln Street, and when one would be going by about fifty miles an hour, you would hear a, a, a police car take off after it, real quick. But in the last two years, that has quit, completely quit. We haven't heard any. And we live, like I said, right across the street, so whenever the police cars leave the place, this building, they always light up our living room. So, we know what's going on in the neighborhood and over here. I just really want to ask that you put yourself in, if you lived in this neighborhood, or if they were going to be doing this to your neighborhood where you currently live, if you, regardless whether you buy or rent, it would be really hard on everyone. It's really what I wanted to say, because I think, you can see there's a lot more turnout, and we don't like the huge thing, because it will double the size of our traffic issues that we have to get in and out of the, basically, two, two roads. And the one over by Culvers is going to be, you're going to have to have a different road eventually, because it's just not going to be enough to service the roads, or the people that we have here, if you do this. Thanks.
Thank you. We're still in public comment, so if anyone from the public wishes to speak?
Excuse me. I'm Brian Stoddard with Canothia and Bruce Architects. I'd just like to follow up on a couple of points from Randy's presentation. I think it should be noted that this site was part of the downtown development and traffic mobility plan, and it was designated for seventy-two units at that point. Now, we understand that that was a placeholder, but in our initial designs, we think that this site can handle the ninety units easily. We originally had come in with a hundred and fourteen, we felt it could handle a hundred and fourteen. It's really, from a planning perspective, it's the perfect use for this site, because you can, with the planning, we've got the single-family on the other side of the bike path, which provides a really nice buffer to the neighborhood that direction. And then to the west, we've got about a hundred and sixty-foot green space, which is really a significant building setback from a neighboring residential property. Then we've got the commercial development to the north, which helps transition those residential uses toward the future commercial development along Verona Avenue. And then we have the municipal uses across the street from the other side. And really, from a traffic perspective, some of the concerns about adding traffic to Lincoln with the ninety units, really, this is where you want the people. I mean, in urban setting like this, you, you want those, those, those units in that urban city, close to the places where they're going to be using, like the parks and City Hall, and the fire station, and the theater. So, we feel this site is just really walkable, to the commercial uses along Verona Avenue and the surrounding areas. Thank you.
Thank you. We are still in public comment, so if someone from the public wishes to speak, now would be the time? Oh, of course.
Well, I've been listening to the discussion, and it seems to me that we're really talking about the future of a, of a very precious neighborhood. I've been here about five years, and I live up on Valley View, and I really enjoy seeing the people who are able to walk, the children who are able to bicycle, the people who are walking their dogs. It's a very unique sort of neighborhood, and I can see how more traffic will make a big change. And I also am concerned about the soccer fields, because there's many children coming and going, and that traffic can be a problem, and it's, can be dangerous. So, I feel this ninety units would be like an explosion coming on the neighborhood. And, so I hope you'll think really carefully about the decision that you make. Thank you.
Could we get your name for the mi, I'm sorry, could we get your name for the minutes?
I'm sorry.
Could we get your name? Your, your name, just?
Susan Smith.
Thank you. Sorry, I should have asked at the beginning. We are still in public comment.
Hi. My name is Mike Matney. I live at 105 South Jefferson Street. I'm not opposed to apartments, but I do not like the, you know, the idea of adding density to the edge of the town, I think that was a word I've heard, in that kind of numbers. I mean, it's, it's a, it's, it's like a lot of people have already expressed tonight, it's a very large number of people to add to one place at the edge of town in an established neighborhood. One of the big concerns I have, that hasn't been brought up yet, to my knowledge tonight, is the amount of additional noise this would bring, right? Peak of summer right now, imagine another ninety air conditioners, you know, in your backyard. What's that going to sound like? I'd like to see that evaluated and measured before anything's put forward. Another concern I have, too, is like, one of Verona's big needs is the need for, you know, family housing, right? One of the common council members suggested that they add a park to the design earlier on one of the meetings. Who's going to use that, you know, playground and park equipment on the facility if it's all efficiency bedroom apartments? One final thing, too, before I finish here for tonight. You know, I've lived here for twelve years, and, you know, it's nice and simple. You know, I love my neighbors, it's a nice neighborhood, and on a good night, you know, I can just, I can sit in my living room, and I'll hear Great Horned Owls calling, right? You know, from the bike path, from around the neighborhood, it's a nice, quiet neighborhood. I'm afraid that's going to go away. You know, if, if, you know, the units go in, in that kind of planned density. So, thank you.
Thank you. We are, of course, still in public comment. If anyone from the public wishes to speak?
My name is Ed Atkinson. I live on 203 South Jefferson Street, right behind the project supposed to be. And I think me, I live here in town since seventy-seven. And now, me, what I, they call it hometown USA. Now, I mean, somebody else want to come in and change it, put a big three-story apartment building up in, in the old neighborhood, and it'll be out of place looking. Yes, I know, we need progress to keep going. People sold the land, they like to make money off of it. People who want to buy it, do something different to it. And words mean a lot. Sometimes, they can change it in the progress of the development. Be one thing lead to another thing, but I think if me, a big apartment building, yes, but not in the old town area. They should be out there where they, where it'll be looked neat, not someplace down there that'll stand out of the, well, out of sight. Me, it'll be, this look weird to me, it will. And that's all I have to say. I'd just like to keep the old neighborhood looking like a small-town USA, but I guess that's going to go away. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to speak? Last chance? All right. With that, we will move on to the approval of the minutes from the July ninth, two thousand and eighteen Common Council meeting. Questions, corrections, motions?
Move approval?
Motion by Alder Ricky, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Kemp. Any questions or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. And the minutes are approved. For item six, we will have mayor's business, and first up, we'll have our presentation by the Verona Road Business Coalition.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm Cindy Yagi with the Verona Road Business Coalition, and with me tonight is Jeff Rullinger on my, from our executive committee, as well as Dale Benjamin from Benjamin Plumbing with us as well. First of all, I wanted to thank the city of Verona for your generous financial support of the Verona Road Business Coalition. You've supported us for about three years now, and in the spirit of true transparency, we're here to, to show you how we've been spending your resources that you've supported us with. First of all, hopefully you all know about the Verona Road Business Coalition and who we are. We are a primarily volunteer organization that supports about a hundred and fifty businesses that are in and along the Verona Road corridor, that traverse through the southern part of Madison, through Fitchburg, and into Verona. We currently are working with the businesses to get them through the stage-two portion of the Verona Road construction, which started in the fall of two thousand and sixteen and is expected to go through two thousand and twenty. And that's hopefully, if we stay on track, to, to be completed in two thousand and twenty. As you know, we're all in this together, everyone is, you know, going through and traversing and commuting through the road construction. But our job is to not, to encourage people to not avoid the area, but to come into the area and support the businesses, and shop there, and, and do all their normal activities. We are primarily a volunteer organization, nobody's compensated except myself as the project manager, but we are also not a membership organization. We do not ask for membership fees. Primarily, everything that we do for the businesses is done at no charge for them. So, it's a really nice resource for the businesses that are going through the road construction. We, we're established on three pillars for all the activities that we do. The first pillar is targeted advocacy, working with lawmakers to make sure that the Verona Road project stays on track and doesn't get delayed. And then, we also work in the area of education and communication with all the businesses, and finally, in the area of marketing and promotions, to keep their businesses vital. So, in two thousand and seventeen, we hit several really nice milestones. We worked with over sixty of the affected businesses that were affected in the area right around Design Mart and, and in and along Verona Road. Our fifty, we have fifty-plus volunteers that work with us, and they logged in over six hundred hours. So, this is a busy bunch of, of people, and we also like to have fun. We've been accused of making road construction look like fun, I guess that's not a bad thing. Our Verona Road businesses and volunteers contributed over nineteen thousand dollars in in-kind services, products, and time, and then we raised over six thousand dollars in, in sponsorships from various different businesses as well, so. In, in two thousand and seventeen, we also developed a marketing plan that will take us all the way through to the completion of the road construction of two thousand and twenty. And something that we'll be talking about in a little while, and you have a flyer in front of you, is that we did design and develop a Verona Road Passport mobile app. And so, we'll, we'll be talking about that a little bit more, because it's been a really great marketing tool for the businesses in the corridor. We communicated with everybody as far as keeping them up to date on, on the road construction, when traffic was shifting, alternate routes, things like that. We held four marketing seminars that had over a hundred of our businesses in attendance, and we held six marketing events that, that we promoted to the businesses and had about, altogether about twelve, twenty-five hundred people who attended those as well throughout the year. Advocacy is a big part of what we do. Every year, we have an annual town hall meeting, some of you may have attended those in the past, and, and the objective of that town hall meeting really is to, it's a joint collaboration with Wisconsin DOT, with the cities of Fitchburg and Verona. This year, we, we held it in Verona at the Holiday Inn Express, and it's primarily to update everybody about what we can expect in that upcoming year, as far as the road construction along Verona Road. So, and then, we also have Transportation Development Authority coming in and talking about, too, if there's any delays that they're aware of and things with our project as well. We, advocacy, as I mentioned, is an important part of what we do. About a year ago, we were told that the Verona Road project would be delayed, there was a good, you know, good chance of it being delayed, and so, our businesses and our organization mobilized. And we went, and we actually launched an online petition campaign to tell lawmakers, the lawmakers to finish the Verona Road project now, and we got about four hundred and seventy signatures online. Those signatures then generated letters to all of our lawmakers immediately. So, they were, all of a sudden, their inboxes were swamped with all these, you know, signatures and these letters and things, and so, we gained their attention. And after that, we were actually invited to an all-press conference at the Capitol, and so, several of our businesses came in, and they talked about the impact that the construction has already had to their businesses. Many of our businesses are down between ten and twelve percent, but there are also businesses that are down over twenty-five percent year over year because of the road construction. So, the businesses came in, and they, they talked about their businesses, you know, to the lawmakers, and then asked for no delays to Verona Road. And because of that, we were able to keep our project on, on schedule and on time and moving forward. And furthermore, the lawmakers do know us, so. Another part of our advocacy is that we also have nine block captains. The Verona Road corridor is, is sectioned off into blocks, if you will, and every block has a captain, and in essence, that's, that's a point person for which the businesses can bring forward any of their issues or concerns, and then those are brought forward that, and we, we work on those. Education and communication is another one of our pillars. We do hold regular seminars. We, we survey our businesses to find out what are the important issues and concerns that they have during road construction, what's, you know, what's really affecting them. And then, we, we hold seminars to try to address those. So, we've had them on cybersecurity, how do you get government out of the way, how to use Facebook more effectively with your marketing. And then, the biggest need everybody seems to have is maximizing their signage. Because as you know, along Verona Road, a lot of the visibility for the businesses has disappeared, and so, signage has become prominently important. Part of this, the funding that we get does go to help with right-of-way signage. So, during the periods of construction where, for example, on Nesbit Road, when, you know, we were under construction there, we had to put in right-of-way signage to show consumers and travelers which way to go for various different businesses. So, we work with Wisconsin DOT on all the permits that we need to get that signage, and we install the right-of-way signage. And as I mentioned, we also work with the businesses on what kind of signage needs they have, and, and help them to get that installed. Marketing and promotions is probably the main area that the businesses need our help with. During road construction, there's nothing more important than, you know, your marketing and your promotions. So, we're, we're a pretty well-oiled marketing machine when it comes to, to our efforts and things. We've got a very robust website for the businesses, it's got a business toolkit out there, they can look at any of the various different issues on, on our website. But we also use a lot of social media as well, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. We do promotional events. As I mentioned, we like to make road construction somewhat look like fun, so when the various sections of road construction are completed, for example, when we're completed with Nesbit Road, we had a Roads Are Open press, you know, press release, press conference, and an event where we had a, a big, what's that piece of equipment called?
Semi.
The semi, well, one of them, we had a semi coming through the banner and things like that, to make it a that to make it a big impact, but the other one was a land mover that we had. So we, again, tried to make, you know, to make it look fun and things, and also, our main message there is to let people know that that segment of the road is now open. So don't avoid it, it's now open for, you know, regular traffic. We've also had Small Business Saturday events, Jingle and Mingle events, and again, working to get the businesses all working together and promoting each other. Okay, so in front of you here is our brand-new Verona Road Passport mobile app, and we're really very excited about this. We worked and designed it, took us about three, four months to do this, and then we actually got about fifty businesses already signed up on it, we did that first, and then March sixteenth, we put an all-press release out that we were launching this new mobile app. We got TV coverage on it, we got coverage across the board on it, and in our first thirty days, well, first of all, it's a, it's a place where the businesses can put their app-only coupons, deals, promotions, it's a way for people to save money. So for example, the Verona Woods has a coupon out there that you can redeem, it's five dollars off of twenty-five dollars anytime you go out for dinner there. So, and Fisher Kings on there, and Four Sisters, and Sugar River Pizza, and, you know, so there are a lot of Verona businesses already on the, on the mobile app. It also provides road construction, construction updates, so when the traffic is shifting, you'll get a push notification on your mobile app that says, hey, don't forget, today the traffic shifts after six o'clock, things. It's got a calendar, calendar of events, of the calendar, of the events that are going on in the corridor as well, and there's also hot deals in there. So all the, the businesses that are listed have their, they're offering hot deals on their app only, so. So in the first thirty days that we launched, we had over fifteen thousand views on the app, we had over three hundred and seventy-five downloads, which is about twelve, thirteen a day, and we had, as I mentioned, fifty businesses that signed up to be on the app, and we continue to keep adding businesses. And then we had about fifty of those coupons redeemed. So we've, we've talked to app builders, and they, they believe that these metrics are very promising for the first thirty days, so. So I want all of you, before you go, to download the, the app, you just go into the, one of the app stores and just type in Verona Road Passport, install it on your mobile device, and you will have all of our hot deals as well. We talked about the website as well, and Verona Road, we are very social. So on our social media, Facebook and Twitter, we use that very extensively, but any business that likes us, we'll go ahead and we'll re-promote them. So let's say Sugar River Pizza is doing some kind of a special and things like, we'll, we'll, we'll look through all those every day and then repost them out on our Facebook. Don't forget Sugar River Pizza's promotion today and things like that. So we're constantly watching all of our businesses in, that are part of the coalition here, and re-promoting and remarketing them. Okay, and so we, we keep track of our social media metrics, we know, you know, who's coming to our, our social media, we know sixty-six percent of our interfaces are with women, and thirty-four percent are with men. Our followers are very, very active with us and very engaged, so when we're posting things out there, they're also sharing it with their customers and consumers as well too. So it's a very nice give and take as far as our social media. Because we are, you know, on a limited financial budget and things, there periodically, we do, do fundraisers. One of the Verona businesses was very generous and held a fundraiser for us, the Wisconsin Brewing Company, this past year, and it does one for us every year to help support us. Also in two thousand and eighteen, Yahar Bay held a fundraiser for us as well, it was during their Wisconsin Craft Spirits Event, and so that was a really nice fundraiser for us as well. But many of you may be familiar with our biggest fundraiser of the year, and that's our Oktoberfest event, and that is held every year at Quivvies Grove, and it's, it's meant to be a customer appreciation. So the businesses in the coalition are encouraged to buy tickets to the Oktoberfest, to give out to their, their customers, their employees, as a thank you for staying engaged during this whole time of road construction. And we have, you know, polka band and beer and food, and Bucky comes, and it's, it's a really great event. Last year, we had almost four hundred people that attended at Quivvies Grove, and this year, it'll be September nineteenth from four to eight, so please mark your calendars. As I mentioned before, we have the Roads Are Open ribbon cuttings, we have those regularly. The Jingle and Mingle event, I just wanted to mention that because what we've done with that is we've made the corridor really kind of a holiday destination for shopping, for dining, to get people out into the area. So in front of you, you should also have one of the flyers from our Jingle and Mingle event, and all the activities that we held, we had visits with Santa, we had strolling carolers that went all the way down, it's from the businesses, we had ornament-making for the kids, we had holiday pet portraits, we had kids' movies, you know, at Yahar Bay, we had horse carriage rides, we had live reindeer we incorporated in with that as well, and then a holiday bazaar. So what ended up happening with that is that we ended up having about fourteen hundred people that, that attended that event, and we had a passport, so that they had to go ahead and, and visit at least six of the businesses, get them stamped, and then they went into a raffle, and then they, they got prizes out of that and things. But it made them, you know, go out through, throughout the corridor. And we had a lot of comments from families that said they planned their day according to what we had going on. So they started in the morning with the visit with Santa, then they went to see the carolers, and then they did, you know, the pet portraits and kind of spent the entire day. The main thing is that, again, we are, we're very big into metrics, we're constantly evaluating, you know, what we're doing, how we're doing it, and, and, you know, how are we doing? So we advertised that Jingle and Mingle event to over forty thousand households in Fitchburg, Verona, Oregon, and the Crest Dene County. As I mentioned, we had about fourteen hundred that attended, and all the businesses that participated in this event all reported either an increase in traffic or increase in sales in their stores. Jane J. Craftworks, which is one of the Verona businesses, she had sales that, a sales increase of a hundred and ten percent over the previous Saturday, and that's when Verona had their own holiday event going on. So we were very, we felt very good about that. Yahar Bay had an increase of sales and up over fifty customers in that day, Pet Supplies Plus was up thirty-six percent, and that was even up over like their Black Friday events, so. And then we've gotten some nice testimonials from some of the businesses that is, that have been involved with us as well, too. As I mentioned, VRBC, we are primarily, we run on, we run by volunteers, so, and we really appreciate our volunteers. We, we have a great relationship with the Verona Chamber and Lee Jordan, and so we volunteer at each other's events, we promote each other's events, and we truly have a great relationship all the way around, and we could not perform what we do without the volunteers we have. Just a reminder of how we're funded, City of Fitchburg has put into their capital improvement plan a pledge of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to get us through two thousand and twenty, and it's a matching grant, so we have to match every, every dollar we get from them. So in, we got twenty-five thousand in, in two thousand and eighteen, we want to thank the City of Verona for funding us at the level of five thousand dollars in two thousand and eighteen, and we raised six thousand, as I mentioned, in matching cash funds, and the nineteen thousand in in-kind as well, so. And then we, we work to get sponsorships as well. We are very results-oriented. VRBC, we are, we're on a limited budget and things, generally, any dollar that you give us will be turned over and given a two-to-one return on investment. We truly work very hard to get the businesses engaged and collaborating together, because if and when, you know, the Verona Business Coalition goes away, we want the businesses to continue to keep on working together, to keep on collaborating together, and, and, you know, doing their marketing and promotions together as well, so. These are some of our valued sponsors and those that have supported us throughout the years, Benjamin Plumbing, City of Verona, City of Fitchburg, we truly, we value every one of our, our sponsors, they're very important to us. So again, we want to thank you for your support, hopefully you can see, we've, we have had a very busy year, and I would entertain any questions that you might have.
Questions from the council? All right, not seeing any, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, under Mayor's Business, we will have consideration of candidates for District One, Alder Person, the vacancy. So during this time, each candidate can make a brief statement, we'll say about three minutes. Please let me know.
Hi, my name is Robert Feller. I would appreciate your consideration for the seat for District One on the City Council. I'm a lifetime, nearly lifetime resident of the City of Verona, I work here in Verona, I own a business here in Verona, and I just love Verona, and would like to see Verona continue to thrive, and appreciate your consideration for filling the vacant seat for District One.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Feller? Alder Cronin?
So, Mr. Feller, in your application, you mentioned attracting young adults to live and work in Verona. What do you think is the most important thing that would need to happen to make that Verona an attractive place for young people?
I think having a variety of businesses, and so that the, that would include employing youth, and besides the adult employment opportunities, I just think that having opportunities for diversity for the businesses would give the opportunities for the youth to have employment opportunities that way.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions from the council? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Christine Posey, if she is here? Oh, she, can someone grab her? I'm not really a yeller, but if Christine Posey would approach the podium.
Good evening, my name is Christine Posey, and I am a resident of District One. As you see from my application for the seat, I have chosen Verona as the place I live. I was not born here, I was born in a different Verona, Verona, New Jersey, and I relocated here, and part of the reason I chose Verona was because of that connection, and lo and behold, it has become the place I call home, and the place I'm choosing to raise my family. It's a community that I have grown to enjoy being a part of, and in recent, mid-last year, my life circumstances have changed, so I can actually look around and take a moment to see how I can better my community. I have been preaching and working with our youth of all of southwest, south-central Wisconsin for the last seven years about leadership, and so I've had that opportunity to say that to them over and over again. And so I stand today to stand and go, I'm gonna do it. So I would appreciate, and if you have any questions for me or anything else, I'd be happy to answer those questions at this time.
Thank you. Any questions for Christine? Alder Journey, and then Alder Cronin?
So I noticed in the, kind of the front end of your resume, you switched residences about every one to two years, or, you know, employment opportunities. But you've been here for seven years now. So, I mean, that would be a concern for me as to what your stability is.
I can hear that.
As far as a community.
Yeah, prior to kind of my young adulthood, I, actually, the town I grew up in, I never left there, my grandparents built their home there, and my mother raised us in that same home, so I had those roots there. My life story is I met my husband, who's from California, and he and I, before we had kids and before our children were in school, took the opportunity to follow our passion, and now that our kids are settled and into that kind of opportunity, we really have said that this is where we're going to set down roots for as long as we can choose to and continue moving forward with this community. In this past year, when my employment changed, I did have the opportunity to maybe consider moving, and I chose not to. I chose to stay here because of the great community, the great people I've met, my neighbors, I love my neighbors, my kids are out playing skateboards right now with our neighborhood kids, and I just think that's terrific. It's what I grew up with, and it's what they're having that opportunity to do here.
Thank you. Alder Cronin?
So when I read through your application, I noticed that you mentioned health and human services needs as an issue that faces Verona and will continue as Verona grows. Can you give an example of what types of services you think, or you would suggest that Verona provides residents?
I believe at this point in time, there are often those folks that are hidden, you know, we are a community that has kind of that higher end, that's very visible, but I would want to necessarily look into more of what are those needs that are hidden at this point in time. As communities grow, we all know that that is one of the things that can happen. My background, my educational background in urban studies and sociology, that's what I've looked at, and everywhere I've gone to, I've looked at those things that are needs, and it's just keeping an eye on that, I think is the most important thing, the specifics of exactly what our needs are today, I'll be honest, I need to look at it more. But I know that as communities grow, and with what I've seen just moving here seven years ago, it's definitely something we need to keep an eye on, to make sure that as the community grows, we bring everyone along, and we don't end up with kind of that underside of things getting lost.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions? Seeing none.
Okay, thank you very much.
And just to outline the process of the next meeting, we will have a vote, and since there's only two candidates, it won't be ranked choice voting, it'll just be a straightforward ballot. With that?
It'll, it's the second meeting.
Oh, my apologies. The, the, the second meeting in August, so August twenty-seventh, my apologies. Next up, we will have announcements, if anyone from the council has an announcement. Alder Cronin, and then Alder Journey.
So the council was requested to supply a representative to the Verona dementia-friendly community, they had approached Mayor Diaz on that, and he immediately responded, and so I was able to attend the first meeting on July eleventh. And as a result, now I'm learning more about what Verona is doing as far as public education and business education in terms of becoming a more dementia-friendly community. There was an article in the last Verona Press on the activities that are going on in Verona. It's a very active Dane County project, and so I'm pleased to represent Verona in that activity, thank you.
Alder Cronin?
I just wanted to make an announcement that the Senior Center, this coming Saturday, the twenty-eighth, is having a family fun fundraiser from three to seven at the Senior Center on Paoli Street, and there's gonna be lots of fun activities for the kids, there's gonna be music, there's gonna be food, there's gonna be a fifty-fifty raffle and a silent auction, so if you're looking for something family-friendly to do on Saturday, I encourage you to check it out. It's also the only fundraiser that the Friends of Verona is doing for the Senior Center this year.
Thank you. Further announcements from the council? Seeing none, next up, you'll have the administrative report.
Thank you. Just a quick update, our position for a Human Resources Coordinator closed on July 16th. We received 37 applicants. For the first time, we've used a, a process using Jobs in Madison. It's a network of 60-plus websites to hopefully provide a more diverse pool of applicants. We will be moving, from this point on, using that network, assessing how they work and if, if we continue to need additional resources to widen our, our pool of applicants, we will continue to still look for ways to do that. But over the next week, we'll try to trim that down to a reasonable manner, a reasonable amount in order to do interviews. I'll be working with the Personnel Committee then to, to look at second interviews or pull together the, the applicants so that we can select a Human Resources Coordinator. Last week, I attended the City and Villages Municipal Insurance Company Summer Conference. We're a member of that insurance pool and it's for municipalities. And it's a commitment to, to go to these, to these events and identify, the topics that came up were identifying the, the coverages of insurance that we have. We're gonna be taking a look at what new options they have available for us for insurance coverage for this upcoming budget. Also, we need to start doing our renewal process for insurance. But they've got a great, a great new service using new web software called Origami, providing us a lot more information regarding lost prevention, lost prevention. And what they try to do is to provide services to the cities that are members that will help reduce the amount of loss that, that we have. As far as training, training is a big program for them. We've had them in a number of times already this year, training our employees. They're, they're expanding their training. They've got more online and recorded videos for our staff to, to be able to utilize. So we will be taking advantage of that. And again, we'll be working with, with them to identify the numbers and coverages for the, for the budget for the upcoming year.
Thank you. Questions for the, Alder Gaskell?
Not related. So, I was wondering if Ms. Clark could update us or remind us of the early voting hours for the upcoming primary, please?
Certainly, thank you. Early voting is in process right now from 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM, Monday through Friday. The first week in August, August 6th through 9th, we will be open from 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM for early voting. That Friday, the 10th, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. There is no early voting on the Monday before the election. And there will be a notice in the Verona Press this week and next week as well with those hours.
Is there Saturday voting on the 2nd?
Thank you, yes, on the 4th, actually. Yes, from 8 until, from 9, I'm sorry, until 2:00 PM.
Thank you. Other questions or comments on the Administrator's Report? Seeing none, we will move on to the Engineers' Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we'll start with the projects that are done or wrapping up this week. So the 2018 Streets Rehab, which was Harriet Streets and Gilman, are done. City staff was finishing up restoration on the Avenue Pavement Rehab is complete and the City of Madison is working on the traffic signals and the timing down at Old PB and East Verona. The city parking lot reconstruction is almost done. They're finishing up electrical and landscaping at the new library. The Senior Center is paved and striped. Restoration is supposed to be finished up this week before the fundraiser on the 28th. And the downtown streets reconstruction, everything is done with the exception of the pavement marking, which are supposed to be done this week. So the continuing projects, the bike pad projects, they're working on the box culvert. They put in sidewalk along Locust and there's a traffic shift on M for the widening work that's gonna be taking place there. And the old PB Bridges, the slabs were placed, the paving is scheduled for next week with the remaining work to be completed by August 17th for an opening.
Thank you. Questions, comments on the Engineers' Report? Seeing none, we will move on to Committee Reports. 10A Plan Commission, and we will turn it over to Alder Gaskell.
Thank you. This is regarding item 10B2, Resolution approving a general development plan to be located at 102-104 Lincoln Street that would allow for the-
Just, sorry to clarify, we do have to go over the public hearing for 10A1. Adam, did you wanna?
Sure, I just, the only comments I'll make is you probably need a motion to open then close the public hearing. And I guess just for the record as well, any of the comments that were stated in the public comment period of the council agenda that related to the Lincoln Street project, those are incorporated into the public hearing for that project, which is happening right now. But we just recommend a motion to open the public, public hearing and then a motion to close and then we can move on to the item with Ms. Gaskell's report.
Excellent. So a motion to open the public hearing would be in order?
So moved.
Motion by Alder Gaskell, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Touche. All those in favor of opening the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, no. And that is open. Anyone, I guess, who did not have a chance to speak during public comment, specifically on the Lincoln Street Apartments, now would be the time. And of course, as Mr. Sayer said, if you already spoke, that is part of the public Seeing no comments, a motion to close the public hearing would be in order?
So moved.
Motion by Alder Gaskell, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Touche. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, no. And it is closed. And I will turn it over to Alder Gaskell for 10A2.
Thank you. 10A2, Resolution approving a general development plan to be located at 102-104 Lincoln Street that would allow for the construction of 90 multifamily units. The proposed general development plan would allow for the construction of 90 multifamily units at 102-104 Lincoln Street. The Plan Commission held a public hearing on March 5th, 2018 and recommended for approval. Common Council discussed the project on March 12th and denied the GDP on a five to three vote due to concerns about traffic, parking, and onsite stormwater. On June 4th, the Plan Commission discussed three development options for the property, including a three-story, 90-unit multifamily, a three-story, 47,000 square foot office building, and a one-one-story, 32,700 square feet industrial building. Plan Commission continued to support the 90-unit multifamily but could support a three-to, three-story office building. On June 11th, 2018, the Common Council discussed the same three development options for the property. In general, the council was receptive to multifamily or office land use for the property. On June 27th, 2018, Alder Persons Kemp, Cole, and Cronin requested that the denied GDP, GDP be placed on a Common Council agenda for reconsideration. Public hearing is being held before the Common Council on the reconsideration request for a three-story, 90-unit multifamily building. As part of the reconsideration, staff sent public hearing notices to all property owners within 200 feet of the property, posted a public hearing sign on the property, and published a public hearing notice in the Verona Press.
Thank you. So we are on the discussion item for the resolution. Anyone have any comments, questions, or potential motions? Alder Journey?
So during the presentation and then the public comments, there was, there were concerns, reference parking. Will there be sufficient parking within that complex? That is no street parking.
Mr. Sayer?
Thank you. So as part of the general development plan, which is being reconsidered, the applicant is requesting a parking exemption for that. They would have a one-to-one underground parking ratio to units, so there'd be at least 90 underground parking units within the project. The overall parking ratio for the site is 1.66 stalls per unit. That is a exemption they're requesting. Staff feels it's a, it's a sufficient number of spaces that they're requesting. It's typical of other projects that we've recently approved as well, too, that have had parking exemptions. They also, in their, in their site plan, they do have a potential expansion area as well. If, if Andy could put the slide up on the screen, please. Thank you. They do have a potential expansion of, of, on the surface parking area that they could expand into if, if parking were to become an issue. Staff feels that the parking they have right now is sufficient, though. We think it's, we think it's appropriate, so we don't, we don't have any concerns. And that, that calculation does not take into consideration any on-street parking. The 1.66 stalls per, per unit, that is based upon just what is on their property and that's that 90 underground spaces and that's the 60 surface spaces.
Alder Cole and then Alder Touche?
I noticed that there was a, a comment about potential noise issues and more air conditioners and whatnot. I didn't know if, you know, if other, like, similar developments have had issues with noise. I would assume there wouldn't be 90 more air conditioners with rather a large unit and do you know the kind of noise that would put off in the, in the neighborhood?
Sure, I thought it was a good comment. That, you know, haven't, actually haven't heard that one for a while here. It's something we, we typically even take a look at, at the precise implementation plan. Once we kind of get down to the type of cooling units or heating units, that's when we can explore that as part of the, the PIP. So that's something we can, I made a note to talk with the developer about that one in, in particular. Regarding other projects that, you know, have been located in residential areas and any complaints with that, I think the one that immediately pops to my mind is the Scenic Ridge Apartments, just in the proximity of, of that development to our residential neighborhood that's, that's close by and has been established. I'm not aware of any, any, any noise complaints there, especially from a AC cooling standpoint. So I, I, I'm personally not aware of any, any complaints elsewhere on these recent projects that we've had regarding noise.
Thank you. Alder Touche?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Sayer, can you review the, in our downtown plan, how this property kind of fits into it and what it was, what was proposed for it, please?
Yes, so actually on the screen before you is a, a portion of that downtown plan. That plan was adopted, I believe, in end of 2013, beginning of 2014. But that plan did recommend the Seacor property, which is the southern part here as this Area 13, and that was a two-to-three-story multifamily development, up to 72 apartment units and then approximately 118 parking spaces, 80 of which would be underground. So the site was planned in that, in that downtown plan as, as a multifamily use.
So my next question for you is if, if this developer came in with a 72-unit proposal, would it be going through the same steps it's going right now?
I would believe so. So the, the, the comprehensive plan is intended to be a guide. It's not actually a regulatory document, it's intended to guide development. Most likely would take a planned unit development just based upon our density standards we have in the city. In our urban residential district, we allow up to 12 dwelling units per acre. I believe the lot size here is 3.2, 3.5 acres in size. So that puts it in around 40, 45 units that would be allowed by, by right. So yes, it would most likely still require a, a planned unit development and we'd be in the same process as we are today.
Thank you.
Questions, comments, potential motions? Alder Eecking?
I was kind of hoping that this would be like a mixed-use kind of project with something other than apartments on the main floor and apartments above the, the main floor for the, the top two stories. But I guess I just had a question for staff, like if you could explain, other than the points you already touched on, why you support this project and also answer the question that was brought up as a safety issue with the traffic and what the traffic impact analysis showed about potential use of Valley View Road instead of going straight out from Lincoln or another road onto Verona Avenue? Would, would Valley View Road be used as a good alternate backway and would that cause traffic issues or, or not? I'm just wondering about the safety of that.
Sure, so, so from a staff perspective, you know, we, we supported the GDP in March, what was ultimately denied by the Common Council. I think the support, obviously, from a staff standpoint was one, we felt that the request is within the spirit of, of the comprehensive plan, the downtown plan. You know, while it doesn't match the units precisely, as I said previously, is that the comprehensive plan is intended to guide development, not, not, not to regulate it with a, with a, with a hard number. We think the 90 units is, is, you know, within the spirit of that plan and the intentions of what, of what that plan had envisioned for the site. I think, you know, when that plan was adopted, I think we, you know, looked at this property as a, you know, potential redevelopment site at some point and obviously that is, that is occurring. The intention of the, the multifamily use was intended to, you know, buffer the, the commercial along Verona Avenue and ultimately kind of step back as you kind of step back from commercial, multifamily, and then into that single-family residential area. It seemed like a good transition use between kind of the area as well. I think we also looked at this as, you know, trying to create, you know, more walkability in the downtown area, looking at sites that are in the downtown area, which we just don't have many of those. We, we felt this site was a, a reasonable location to look at, an apartment-type use just from the fact that you're on the bike trail, you're very close to that core of the downtown as well, too. It, it, it made a lot of sense from our standpoint. So the project itself and the general development plan, looking at some of the exemptions they've looked for, they have a front yard setback exemption. We think that's appropriate because the site is adjacent to the downtown overlay district and the setbacks they're looking at are consistent with that district. That makes a lot of sense from our standpoint. Looking at a height exemption, I believe, of 42 feet, the, the code allows up to 35 feet, we felt that was a reasonable exemption, especially when you have the fire station nearby and you potentially have additional density north here in the future, too. It, it made a lot of sense. And then the parking exemption as well, too, which is consistent with other projects but still maintains that one-to-one unit per underground parking space ratio that we've, just to kind of establish throughout the city as well, too. So it, it made a lot of sense from a, a, a long-term kind of standpoint of, of kind of looking at the area. Traffic, it's, the traffic itself, I'll try to answer this and if Mr. Jacobson or Mr. Billmeyer wants to jump in and correct anything I say that's incorrect, they, they will. So we did have ACOM, Jess Billmeyer, take a look at the traffic here. He didn't do a traffic analysis, he did just a brief, a brief study of, of it. And part of the reason for that was when we did the downtown plan, we invested a significant amount of resources into looking at traffic as part of that plan. And the basis for kind of having Mr. Billmeyer just look at this more from an overall studies standpoint versus a full analysis is that plan recommended the site for 72 units and also a, a traffic signal at Lincoln and Verona Avenue. Obviously now we have that, the signals in place already. And the request tonight is 18 units more than what was actually in that plan. We felt it was a small number. But Mr. Billmeyer did, did look at it and in general, you know, his findings were that, you know, the signal's most likely at Lincoln and Verona Avenue would need to be adjusted, the timing of those, you know, if this project were to occur. So just looking at the timing of that to making sure that it, that it functions well and you don't have traffic backing up. I don't recall our exact discussions regarding how much traffic would, would, would go south. I think in looking at his analysis here, he says the development traffic will have a small impact on the neighborhood south of the Military Ridge State Trail. And he said if we conservatively assume 25% of the development traffic wants to go south on Main Street and all that goes through the neighborhood south of Military Ridge Trail, those streets would see an increase in traffic of about 10 vehicles in the highest hour or one every six minutes. Going from 72 units to 90 units would send about two additional vehicles per hour to the south. The current volume on Valley View is about 700 vehicles per day. With the full 90-unit development and conservatively assuming 25% go through the neighborhood, traffic would increase about 15% on Valley View. So that was his recommendation. So that was his recommendation from, or his findings, I guess, from back in February of 2018.
Anything further, Alder Ricky?
Just, can you give some perspective of what that means for people who live there? Or for people walking on the street or taking their kids to the ACT or the ballfields?
Sure, I mean, I do think, and I've personally biked and walked on the road myself with my kids, too. I mean, I think that's a valid concern regardless of this development or not. I think, you know, as I came back here tonight for this meeting, there was something going on at Veterans Park and the street was packed, and it was kind of chaotic. To be quite honest with you, trying to drive down there and, you know, the sightlines were poor at times. So I mean, I think that's probably a broader question. This is my opinion. A broader question as we look long-term at that street of, you know, should there be a sidewalk along that? Should there be a bike and ped path, especially along the bike or the park portion of that? It's also just a larger question in general across the whole city of, you know, as you look at sidewalks and, you know, are there ways to safely accommodate people? And we've done that elsewhere in the city with, you know, on-street markings of bike lanes, of walking areas as well, too. But it's kind of that broader conversation that we've had with the council in the past and committees of just, you know, how can we make the city more bike and pedestrian friendly? I think looking at Mr. Billmeyer's, you know, comments here of just, you know, would see an increase in traffic of about 10 vehicles in the highest hour or one every six minutes. I mean, you know, my initial reaction is that's, it's not a drastic change. I think some of the traffic patterns we have going on here in 2018 in the city are kind of crazy at times, just because old PB is closed and people are scrambling to find new and new ways to get out of, to find whoever they're going, looking for their spots. So I mean, I don't see it as a major detriment to the neighborhood myself personally in just looking at what he had put together there. I think there's bigger questions along this road long-term of just how do you safely move people from A to B? Because ultimately, you have the bridge at the end of Lincoln Street as well, too. That's a major bike and pedestrian standpoint for myself personally, from where I live, but for the entire city as well, too. And I think regardless of this project, most likely that conversation was coming at some point. But I don't see the traffic going south as a big issue.
Go ahead.
Is there some way to sort of compromise and combine additional parking? Like, that would be, that would serve as a municipal lot that apartment renters could also use and parkgoers could use on this parcel as sort of as part of this project that the developer would install?
I think you have the ability as a council, when you look at the municipal parking lot out here tonight, and the number of times I've seen that full in a year, you can usually count on one hand. So I mean, ultimately, if that's a concern, the city could, you know, you can see this project within the end of that parking lot. You can see it. It's a, what, 80, 90, 100-foot walk? I mean, the city, if the city wanted to, I mean, it's a municipal lot. It's no different than what we have in downtown behind the Salsier. I mean, the city could look at something in that location as well, too. If parking were to become an issue for people in this building, I think there is ample parking already in the area. This lot out here is empty most of the time. On an average workday around here, it's empty unless there's an event going on at the Police Department or at City Hall, or if there's an event going on at VACT or the fire station. So I guess my personal take on that is I think there is a lot of parking already in this area. It's just, I think it's already underutilized. So my comment would be I wouldn't rush to add additional parking. I'd look to add, you know, better utilize what we have already, especially since it's already owned by us as a city. We have the ability, if we wanted to, to regulate that like a municipal parking lot. That'd be my recommendation before we'd start just putting more parking in just for the sake of parking.
Alder Gaskell?
Yes, please. I have a question first and then a comment. Signalizing that intersection was part of the redevelopment plan, is that correct?
Yes, that was just one of many pieces.
That was one of our recommendations that we've followed through on. So this might be very simplistic, and I was trying to visualize 90 cars. So Miller's parking lot accommodates 134 cars, and the average daily traffic on South Main there, and the count was basically done in front of Salsier, so I'm going to extend it to Miller's because I think that's reasonable, is 11,900 cars. That's almost 12,000 cars a day. So if you think about Miller's and how it functions, and if all of those spots were full, granted, not all 134 people are coming out at the same time. If you look at it that way, 90 cars on Lincoln is not significant. It may feel really significant because the number 90 sounds really high, but when you put it in perspective, a couple streets over coming out of Miller's, which I do several times a week, and sometimes you have to wait 30 seconds, sometimes you have to wait two minutes, but it functions and it works. So I don't, maybe that's too simplistic, but just trying to think about what this 90 actually means other than just looking at numbers and hearing engineers speak, just something to think about.
Thank you. Other comments? Alder Kemp?
Mr. Sayer, if you could, and I understand a lot of the issues are down here in front of the park. I'm wondering if a lot of the concerns from the public, which are very valid, have more to do with the parking in front of that area as opposed to the issues that would be in front of this newer development? So, one, is there a way that the city can make sure the general public understands they can use the municipal lot? And then, two, to alleviate some of the parking issues down here, is there anything that we could do to try and help with that sooner rather than later? I'm someone who's frequently over there because my son plays soccer and baseball. They were there tonight, so we're part of that issue. So do you know if there's anything we could do to alleviate some of the parking on the southern part of the street there?
I mean, sure, so for the municipal parking lot, I mean, signs would probably be the key. I think that, you know, if the city was interested, we could do some type of wayfinding signage of trying to direct people into that area. You know, ultimately, people are going to take the shortest route to the destination, especially, as you know, if you have kids, you know, you're going to try to walk as the shortest distance possible. I think with Veterans Park, I mean, and I have not had a conversation with Dave Walker at all about this, but I mean, you could potentially look at adding additional parking spaces, but then it would impact the soccer fields there and the playground equipment. You know, you could look at adding parking off the cul-de-sac, and the name of the street is escaping me, but you could look at additional parking there. But, you know, those are the initial ideas, just because I think, you know, I don't think you're going to be able to get people to park at City Hall just because people aren't going to want to walk that far with kids.
One other follow-up. Initially, when I voted against this, it was because I had concerns about the environmental impact. Can you please go into a little more detail about leaving the site as it is with respect to water retention versus developing the plan? I think they did display some of that earlier, but I wanted a bit more detail on that.
Sure, and I may need Mr. Monpass's help here, but generally, when you develop a property, you create, you know, stormwater management ponds on the site. And as part of it, the site is graded, sloped in that water, and then is directed into the areas where water is meant to collect. So currently, kind of in the current form, you know, the water is obviously draining potentially to the street, to the neighbors. The intention of kind of having that onsite stormwater management is to collect that water, treat it, and before it's released off into the waterways itself. You want to add anything, Jeff?
No, that's a pretty good synopsis. Thanks.
Thank you.
Questions, comments, motions from Alder Gaskell and then Alder Touche?
I would like to know, and I don't think anyone can off the top of their head answer this question, but what does it cost us as a city to build a parking spot? So is that something we can look into? Because I know it's a discussion we have a lot at my old job, subsidized parking in Madison. It costs $10,000, $11,000 per space that then gets subsidized. So the cost of those parking and adding additional parking is borne by all the residents of Verona and not just the neighborhoods. That's something to think about. But I would like to know what it costs us when we build our municipal lots. What are we paying per spot?
Alder Touche, unless Adam has a...
I was wondering if an answer was going to come out. I just want to put in a comment. You know, obviously, the neighbors, you know, I'm looking at this picture, which, Adam, thank you very much for having the plan picture up here because I keep looking at number 13 here. But I'm thinking, I live in this neighborhood. What do I like, what do I not like? There was a development that was that the chocolate factory was trying to do, and there was a big concern about these tall buildings looking in on their neighbors. And looking at this plan, I see a two-story building close to where the houses are and a three-story building next to the road, and I find that more appealing. From, if I live there, because that's, you know, a lot of those houses are either ranch or two-story buildings. It's not unheard of to have a two-story building next to you. So, you know, I'm just trying to think, I'm expressing what my thought process is and what I'm considering here. The other part is just, what's our plan? Why did we plan it this way? And 72 units seems much more reasonable to me, especially from the original. I think it was 140, now down to 90. I appreciate that, but I would rather stick to the plan myself if it were me. I get the traffic concerns. My, fortunately, my children no longer play soccer down there, and, but I do remember experiencing heavy traffic. Hometown days, it's always going to be busy down in hometown days regardless of what's going on there. But at this time, I don't feel like I can support a 90-unit proposal, but I can support a 72-unit. Thank you.
Other questions, comments, potential motions from the council? Alder Gurney?
So have there been any thoughts what impact it would have on the property value of the surrounding homes?
So typically, from a zoning and a land use standpoint, value doesn't factor into it. I mean, we can, you know, I think if you look around the city and, you know, for example, look at Scenic Ridge, look at the projects there and the homes that are next to it and homes that are still being built next to it, I don't think there's been a, and I haven't looked, but I'd be shocked if there was a drastic change because of the property values, because of what's been built there. But no, I don't have anything, I've never looked at that, just because it typically doesn't go together in that fashion.
Alder Cronin?
I would just want to make a comment. So I live in downtown Verona, and I have actually been through this. When I bought my home, Walgreens did not exist. So I have actually seen, and our neighborhood is very similar to yours, and there were equal concerns about traffic patterns and light pollution and noise and safety. That said, Walgreens has been a good neighbor. It's been a good addition to our community. I also think that we have a very limited amount of space to work with in Verona, and we're growing. Whether we like it or not, we're growing, and people are going to need housing. And I think this is a really unique opportunity to get some housing that is going to actually create opportunities for people to walk and bike, so that they can walk downtown, so they can walk to the post office, so that they may have 90 cars or 90, 120 cars. But hopefully, we can get them out of their cars and get them walking and biking to grocery shopping, to the library, to the post office. I think this is a good use of space. I think the developer has been responsive to the concerns of the community. I don't think there's ever going to be a, you know, 100% agreement there. But from my perspective, I really think this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to get some good quality housing in downtown Verona.
Thank you. Other questions, comments, or potential motions? Just to clarify, I haven't recognized a motion on the resolution, so if somebody wanted to do that for the sake of discussion, now would be the time. Because otherwise, we'll just move on without voting. So if somebody, Alder Gaskell?
Yes, thank you. I would like to move approval of a GDP to be located at 102104 Lincoln Street that would allow for the construction of 90 multifamily units.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Kemp. Anything further to add, Alder Gaskell?
No.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make a comment myself. I don't feel like this apartment development fits in with the character of the neighborhood. I think it's too many apartments in too small of an area. I tend to drive through on Lincoln Street, and, you know, there is low visibility, and I worry about the potential parking issues, and I worry about the potential traffic issues. And, you know, for a lot of this stuff, I try to envision, you know, how would I feel if this was going in next door to me? And I wouldn't want a tall building right next to me. And I try to vote in, you know, put myself in other people's shoes and vote how I would want things to be in my neighborhood. You know, I voted for plenty of apartment buildings, and that's really not the issue. It's just kind of density and what would fit in best with the neighborhood. And so that's my comment. I'd also like to ask for a roll call vote. And I guess, in the interest of total transparency, I'm wondering if Mr. Sayer or Mr. Kleimeyer could explain how vetoes work? Because we haven't had one in a long time.
So we do have a process in our code that mirrors the language in the statutes, Wisconsin statutes, that talks about a process whereby a city mayor can veto action by a common council. Essentially, what happens is if the council takes action, that the mayor wishes to veto. There is a period of time, and let me step back. Every time the council takes some action, to the extent that either the clerk and/or the mayor need to sign that action, whether it's a development agreement, whether it's an ordinance, then the documents go from Ellen to Mayor Diaz. Here, if, for example, if you were to approve the motion that was made, at some point, Ellen's going to provide the ordinance to Mayor Diaz. Once that is provided, Mayor Diaz would have five days to indicate whether or not he would veto the action. If no action is taken by a mayor within that five-day period, it's automatically approved. If a mayor decides to veto action taken by the council, the mayor must also provide a reason for that basis. Essentially, what happened at that point then is it would come back on, in this instance, for the August 16th, I believe, council meeting. At that point, the council, if it could address the issue, you don't have to take... If action is vetoed by a mayor, the council can override that veto. And it takes 75%, so in this case, it would be six of the eight votes. And that action to override a veto wouldn't necessarily take place on the August 16th council meeting, but we would address it in some way, shape, or form. In other words, one way to address it would be someone to say, "Look, I would like to see this on the agenda for the next common council meeting so that we can have a discussion on the action taken by the mayor and potentially override the veto depending on the number of votes." But so, the process is by state statute, yes, a mayor in a city has the ability to veto, and yes, a common council has the ability to override that veto if it were to occur.
Thank you. And just to clarify, if there was a situation where I felt like the veto would get overridden, I wouldn't bother to veto something. Other questions, comments on the motion? Last chance. All right, with that, I will turn it over to the clerk.
Alder Kemp?
Aye.
Alder Cole?
Aye.
Alder Ricky?
Aye.
Alder Touche?
No.
Alder Cronin?
Aye.
Alder Gaskell?
Aye.
Alder Gurney?
Aye.
So that motion, oh, sorry. So that motion passes. Six to one, right? That's, okay. All right, with that, we will move on to the finance committee. Alder Kemp?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me just pull it up here, sorry. It disappeared off my screen. All right, so first, I'd like to make a motion for discussion, possible action regarding a revaluation and maintenance contract with Musser Appraisal Services for Assessor Services. And I have the memo here, but I just, I think I just closed it, so just give me one second, please. Do you have it? I'll just read it. Thanks, Jeff. All right, so for explanation, the city of Verona Assessor Paul Musser's three-year contract expires on December 31st, 2018. This contract would provide Musser Appraisal Services to continue to be the city's assessor for the next four years. The contract includes maintenance costs for a four-year period and revaluation costs for a two-year period. Revaluation is necessary due to the difference between appraised and fair market value for residential property is greater than 10%. residential property is greater than ten percent. The law states that all major classes have to be within ten percent at least once in a four-year period. Two thousand and seventeen is the first year we have a class that is less than ninety percent, which means we are still in compliance. Moving forward, we will have a major class below ninety percent each year. So by two thousand and twenty-one, we will be out of compliance and the state will order a reevaluation. This makes it very important that we complete a reevaluation by two thousand and twenty. The revaluation will need to be a walkthrough revaluation. Last time the city completed a walkthrough revaluation was in nineteen ninety-seven. So just a couple more things to add some color to that. That means we, we do need to get this taken care of. At the finance level, we discussed it. We, you know, tried to look and see if there were some other options or other services that were available. We've discussed this in the past, and this is the gentleman who's done this for the city for years now, so it made sense to, to move forward with that. Is there any, anything else?
Were you going to make a motion?
Yeah. I'll make a motion for approval for the, to approve the maintenance contract with Musser Appraisal Services for, for Assessor Services.
Motion by Alder Kemp, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Cronin, I think, got in first. And any further explanation?
No, sir.
Well, you've heard the explanation. Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed, no. And that motion passes. Alder Kemp?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moving on to B two, discussion and possible action regarding payment of the bills. I'd like to make a motion to approve the payment of the bills amounting four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and forty-one dollars and sixty-nine cents.
Motion by Alder Kemp, is there a second? Second by Alder Ricky? Alder Kemp?
Nothing to report that's drastic, Mr. Mayor. We had a few things that were larger ticket items. There was a payment of thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars, MSA Professional Services. And then there was also a payment of one hundred and ninety-eight thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollars and ninety-five cents as well. That was in asphalt rehab, but everything else seems pretty standard.
You've heard the explanation. Questions, comments on the motion to pay the bills? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion to pay the bills, say aye.
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 Opposed, no. And that motion passes. Anything further?
No, thank you, sir.
Next up, we will have Public Safety and Welfare Committee. Alder Ricky?
Thank you. Under item ten C one, I would like to recommend approval of a special event permit application from Patricia Ulsberger for the Fisher King Winery five K fun run walk on Saturday, September fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen, from nine till three, contingent upon submission of certificate of insurance naming the City of Verona as the certificate holder.
And that was to clarify a motion to approve the permit, not to recommend, right?
To approve the permit, yes.
Sorry, trying to be a stickler for the rules. Motion by Alder Ricky, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Cole. Alder Ricky?
Fisher King Winery is sponsoring a five K fun run walk with proceeds going to the Dane County Humane Society. The event route begins and ends at Fisher King Winery and follows County Highway PB, County Highway M, and the Ice Age Trail. A post-race celebration will be held in the parking lot in front of the winery and will include food, beverages, and music.
Thank you for the explanation. Questions, comments on the motion? Sounds like a great event. Seeing no further questions or comments, all those in favor of the motion to approve the special event permit, say aye.
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 Opposed, no. And that motion passes. Alder Ricky?
Going along with that, item number ten C two, I make a motion to approve a temporary premises description amendment for Fisher King Winery, eleven oh five Laser Street, to include the parking lot area in front of the winery on Saturday, September fifteenth, from nine to three.
Motion by Alder Ricky, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Cole. Alder Ricky?
So this premises description amendment is required for serving alcohol in the Fisher King Winery parking lot during the post-race celebration.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Alder Cole?
I just like the point out that they did said, did say they would have an officer staffing the area outside in the after-party, just to make sure that all the alcohol is consumed within the fenced area in their parking lot, so there shouldn't be any safety concerns.
Sounds good. Other questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed, no. And that motion passes. Anything further, Alder Ricky?
Thank you.
Next up, we will have Public Works Sewer and Water Committee. Alder Touche?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item ten D one, I make an emotion to approve a professional services agreement with Brown Caldwell for project ID two zero one eight dash one one four, Lincoln Street Stormwater Facility, not to exceed, find the right number here, one hundred, eight thousand, eight hundred dollars.
Motion by Alder Touche, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Kemp? Alder Touche?
This, the main goal of this project is for a professional service agreement, for this agreement is to provide stormwater quality treatment of the Lincoln Street Channel watershed runoff as a regional control for future development and redevelopment of that watershed. And please note this, the, and during plan commission, the apartment building that, that we just approved will be impacted by this in a positive way. Maintain the current pollution and peak flow requirements for existing city hall treatment system, of the treatment system to be incorporated into the regional project. Allow future development and redevelopment within the watershed. To purchase treatment capacity provided by Lincoln Street Water Facility in lieu of site water treat, treatment. And that's the specific part I'm talking about. Increase stormwater treatment for total suspended solids and phosphorus ahead of any regulatory changes. The school board this project includes project management, system modeling, construction drawing, specification, permitting, cost estimates, and bidding support. This project is scheduled to be started next month and will hit construction in two thousand and twenty. It's a long time, and the reason for the long time is this permitting process, it can take over a year. Our city attorney has reviewed the contract language, is in a process of finalizing the terms with Brown and Caldwell. And again, as I said earlier, the contract is not to exceed one hundred and eight thousand and eighty dollars, eight hundred dollars, excuse me.
You've heard the explanation. Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the professional service agreement, please say aye.
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 Opposed, please say no. And that motion passes. Alder Touche?
Next item is ten D two, I make an emotion to approve an offer to purchase for lands necessary on parcel seven for transportation project plat one zero zero dash zero zero dash five three one zero zero dash two three zero dash one seven three. Please don't ask me to repeat that, under project ID two thousand and sixteen dash one two three, County Highway PD.
Motion by Alder Touche, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Gaskill?
This is one of eleven purchases, if I remember correct, for this project. This is parcel number seven. Put simply, this property is located in north side of County Highway PD and is the University Ridge Golf Course. We made an offer to them, they are comfortable with it. The offer is for forty-nine thousand, eight hundred dollars. So I would like your approval.
You've heard the explanation. Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the described offer to purchase land, say aye.
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 Opposed, no. And that motion passes. Alder Touche?
This next item is not as straightforward. I will not make a motion just yet. I would, but I would like, again, this is another parcel to be purchased on the same project, but the landowner has not accepted our offer, but wants to, has made a counter offer that we need to discuss in closed session. So at this time, and I wonder if we should combine our two closed, closed session items.
I think there might be a brief statement that goes before the eleven A.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I can give a brief explanation of the, the offer to the, to the owner. City staff and the, our negotiator worked with the representative of the land. This is a land-only purchase, there's no dwellings, it's strictly land. The project requires point two nine nine acres of fee right-of-way and point one six two acres of temporary limited easement, that's for grading purposes during the project. The property is located on the south side of PD, directly across from Woods Road. The offer presented to the owner is twenty-six thousand, three hundred dollars. The breakdown of that is based on a per-acre value of eighty-two thousand dollars per acre. So you take eighty-two thousand times the point two nine nine and back in some of the other components of the appraisal, and that's what compromises the amount of twenty-six thousand, three hundred.
Mr. Kleimeyer, should, would it be advisable to do both motions at the same time, or?
Sure. I, I think the council essentially has two options here. It could move into closed session on item D three and then come back and open session and deal with the remainder of the agenda, or we could, if you'd like, we could provide a, an update on section eleven A in, in open session. Now, I would tell you that from our staff's perspective, we are going to be looking to see if council is willing to move into closed session on section eleven A. And so if, if, if you kind of want to just go into closed session one time and come out once, then we can give the update on eleven A right now, and then you could do two separate motions for closed session, one on the D three and the other on eleven A.
Does that work for people?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So if you recall at the, so, so the, the item for section eleven A is discussion and possible action regarding update on the Verona area school district new high school project as it relates to the approved VASD development agreement. And if you recall, at the last council meeting, we did have a, have a presentation by a member of the school board, and then we had discussion on a letter that I had received from the attorney for the school district requesting to reopen negotiations as a result of the fact that the school district had some, had some negotiations with a property owner related to where a road would be located, but they were not able to reach an agreement with that particular property owner. Since that time, city staff and school district staff have met with two separate property owners. One is Russ and Vicki Swigum, they're the individuals who the school district had previously negotiated with. The other is the coding place. I, I think, I would say, I mean, I have not been personally involved in the negotiations. I would say that both city staff and school district staff jumped on this quickly, which was the request by the school board. I think that there's also, you know, some thanks to go to the property owners for them to take time out of their day to have, you know, preliminary discussions with both the school district and with the city. You know, we have had recently a history of, and I think good history of, you know, having a lot of these discussions in open session because we were dealing with essentially just negotiations between two public parties. I think the reason why we would like to go into closed session is that we now have some third parties that are private property owners. We have had, again, some preliminary discussions with them, we don't have anything formally yet. I think what city staff is hoping to get for purposes of a closed session discussion is, and, and this, you know, kind of dovetails on one of the conversation, or the comments and questions that were asked at the last meeting, we are in a spot where we're going to have to reopen the development agreement. And so essentially what we're going to need to do is determine what the new terms and conditions will be on the development agreement as it relates to kind of this portion of the transportation project. And that's where we need to get guidance from the common council on kind of where the council is with respect to negotiations that we may have with these private property owners. And so that's, and, and we have an expectation that these initial discussions have been fruitful at this point, and so there will be additional discussions with both of these property owners, I believe, but certainly at least one. And that's where, you know, that's where we need the guidance from the council as to where it may land on certain negotiating terms and conditions for purposes of the closed session discussion.
Thank you for that explanation. With that, two motions, one at a time to go into closed session would be in order.
Since I get the first item, I might as well do them both. I'll make a motion, so I'll make a motion, move in a closed session. The common council may convene in closed session as authorized by Wisconsin Statute nineteen dot eighty-five, parant one, parant E, for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons deem a closed session necessary, the common council may reconvene in open session and discuss and take action on the subject matter in closed session.
Motion by Alder Touche, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Kemp. And this is the motion to go into closed session regarding the-
Purchase of lands.
Yes. And with that, I'll turn over to the clerk, because it's a roll call vote.
Alder Cole?
Aye.
Alder Ricky?
Aye.
Touche?
Aye.
Alder Cronin?
Aye.
Alder Gaskill?
Aye.
Alder Journey?
Aye.
Alder Kemp?
Aye.
And that's motion one. Next up, if someone would like to make a motion on going to closed session regarding the school district item?
On the same theme, relative to the Verona area school district new project, or road project, I will make a motion, move in a closed session. The common council may convene in closed session as authorized by Wisconsin Statute nineteen dot eighty-five, parant one, parant E, for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons deem a closed session necessary. The common council may reconvene in open session to discuss and take action on the subject matter discussed in closed session.
Motion by Alder Touche, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Cronin?
Alder Ricky?
Aye.
Alder Touche?
Aye.
Alder Cronin?
Aye.
Alder Gaskill?
Aye.
Alder Journey?
Aye.
Alder Kemp?
Aye.
Alder Cole?
Aye.
Thank you. And with that, we will move into closed session.
Too bad the camera's on.
All right, we are, we are back in open session, and I will turn it over to Alder Touche for the Public Works, item three.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Back to item ten D three, I make an emotion to approve an offer to purchase for lands necessary on parcel four for transportation, project plat number one zero zero dash zero zero dash five three one zero zero dash two three zero dash one seven three, under project ID two thousand and sixteen dash one two three, County Highway PD, for the amount of thirty-three thousand, nine hundred dollars.
Motion by Alder Touche, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Cronin? Alder Touche?
This is a negotiated amount that our city staff did with the property owners, and I think it is a very fair amount for the property.
You've heard the explanation. Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the offer to purchase, say aye.
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 Opposed, no. And that motion passes. We will move on to old business, eleven A, which was discussion and possible action regarding an update on the Verona area school district's new high school project as it relates to the approval of the approved VASD development agreement. And for this, I'll turn over to city attorney, Mr. Kleimeyer.
Yep, no discussion tonight, but just an update for the public. The common council was provided with an update by the city staff on negotiations. Common council is happy with the progress of the negotiations that have taken place since the last common council meeting just two weeks ago. It encourages future collaborative discussions between the city staff, school district staff, and the property owners. And, you know, at this point, the common council would like to see the city and the school district ultimately reach some type of agreement with one of the property owners that we've had the preliminary negotiations with.
Thank you. With that, we will move on to item twelve, new business, discussion and possible action regarding the approval of operator licenses.
Thank you. I have operator license applications for Lauren Ulsberger for Fisher King Winery, Suzanne Leveridge for It's Time Bar and Grill, Dolores Went for Quick Trip number eight thirty-seven, Allison Grover and Shalanda Hill for Quick Trip number four fifty-six, and Ian Adams for Vincenzo Vitcitco.
I move approval.
Motion by Alder Touche, is there a second? Seconded by Alder Kemp. All those in favor of approving the operator's license, say aye.
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 Opposed, no. And that motion passes. A motion to adjourn would be in order. A motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
Motion by Alder Touche?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Cole? All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And we are adjourned. Thank you.